Please join me in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, good evening. Roll call, please.
Mayor Melonazo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Laraba.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Seven present.
Any special audits of business this evening? I don't believe so, so moving on to the minutes. The minutes of the regular school committee meeting of November 17th, 2010, as revised, as I see it. Ms. Laraba.
Just a clarification, Your Honor. On page 22 of the minutes, it states that Mayor Melonazo looked to delay action, and then in the next paragraph, it says Ms. Dougherty moved to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to delay. So is it the superintendent that made the recommendation or the mayor?
I'll take it out.
Uh huh.
Twenty-two.
Page twenty-two. Again, I recall that I brought it up to delay action on it, so it could... It should be the mayor, yes. Thank you for bringing... Yes. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also had a couple of very minor changes. On page one, the very bottom paragraph, the last sentence, all committee members were given totes. We weren't given totes.
I thought that was a tote that they gave you.
No, they were shirts.
It was a hat.
It was a hat, okay. Change it to a hat, sorry.
And then on page two, the first third of the page, the top third, the paragraph starting, Dr. Chris A. Scott stated that in April of this year, that second sentence was selected as one of the 103 top junior ROTC instructors. I think he was selected as the top out of 103. There are 103 ROT instructors, and Chief Master Sergeant Jack was selected as number one in the country.
Okay, so number one out of 103, okay.
Okay, and then on page seven. The third paragraph from the bottom, the line that says, "With the people directly involved in her decision," I think that should be in this decision. The sentence is, "Personally, she has been as open and honest as she possibly can be with the people directly involved in this decision." That's quoting Ms. Martin. I don't know if she has another reading of that, but I think it would be this decision, not her.
Okay, okay, we need to...
Uh huh.
All right, I'll change it to this.
And then just two more, sorry. On page 13, and I can give you these, Ms. Mayor, if you want them after. The paragraph at the tops, the third one starting, "We have to follow the state regulations." Further down in that paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six line, it says, "Subcommittee Discussion Period." She wanted to pool something. That pool should be pull.
Oh, okay.
And then the last one on page 18. The top heavy paragraph at the top of that page, midway down that paragraph, we have a date of December 3rd, when Michael Woodmere will be speaking. That's actually December 8th.
Eight, okay.
And that was all. I would move to accept the minutes as amended.
Motion by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Conway, to accept the minutes as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Vote, thank you. Permission to enter? We have none this evening. Memorials? I would ask us... Oh, I'm sorry, we do. Okay. Oh, we do, okay. It's not on my... Okay, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's one permission to enter this evening. William Manolopoulos, for the amount of $43,309.44, to serve as the principal of the J.G. Pine Arts Magnet School for the 2010-2011 school year. The principal shall be paid a salary of $21,654.72 from August 16 to 2010 through December 31, 2010, and a salary of $21,654.72 from January 1 to 2011 through June 30, 2011, payable in equal installments in accordance with the policy of the school committee. Funding provided by the FY11 Local Operating Budget Principal Salary Line Item. And I'll just remind the committee that we had two principals who were eligible to retire this past June, were willing to stay on for basically roughly half of their salaries for one more year this year, and they could do that in accordance with the regulations with regards to their pension. So we appreciate the savings that we saved because they were willing to do so. The savings per principal was approximately over $60,000.
Moved to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Laraba. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I just had another one quick question. Should there be someone else on this list, or is that coming later?
Yes, there is two principals involved, and the paperwork is incomplete on the second.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mayor Melonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Under memorials, committee as a whole, Ray Moulton, father of Martha Moulton, special education teacher at Lowell High School, and Judge Opelous, aunt of Paul Georges, UTL president, Robin Crouchen, daily school teacher, and Francis Georges, retired J.G. Pine School principal, Mary Morgan, wife of retired superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Morgan, and granddaughter of Patrick Pollard, Robin School art teacher. I believe we also want to just mention the passing of Sheriff DePaula as well, to get it in our minutes. We'd like to have a moment of silence and include the sheriff in that as well. So if we could all rise and dock in chambers, please. Thank you. Unfinished business. Under public participation, we do have Susan Abut from 54 Juniper Street Lowell to speak on Ms. Dougherty's motion, number three. I would ask that we... I would ask for suspension of the rules and have Ms. Dougherty's motion come forward. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Leary, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye. Vote, it's a vote. Under motions by Ms. Dougherty, request the superintendent investigate the feasibility of obtaining an automated external defibrillator, AED, for each of our schools through grants, private fundraising opportunities, collaboration with other community groups, and report back to the committee. Second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. My colleagues may be aware that we had an employee at the Daily School who had a heart attack, I believe it was a heart attack, during the school day, and if it was not for the staff at the Daily, in particular, the nurse, I don't know that she would be hanging on today. With some very minor investigation, I actually got conflicting information. One was that we had two of these defibrillators at the high school, then someone else told me we had five. I'm really not concerned with... I think we should have them in every school, which is why I put this motion forward. I also did very, like, just a brief Google to get an idea of how much these AED defibrillators cost, and just in two seconds of Googling it, some... An ad came up for the new low price of $799 each. Now, I don't know if that's the standard rate or if we could get a better deal, but I have heard about private companies making donations to groups. Perhaps our businesses would like to get involved. So my intention with this is to ask the school department to just explore, what is the feasibility? What are the opportunities out there? I think that in today's day and age, we should have one in each of our schools, and certainly at our larger schools. I think it would be protection for our employees as well as the children in the building. So that's my intent with this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Conway.
Just very quickly, through you, Ms. Mayor, to the superintendent, do we have any idea how many schools at this point have the AEDs?
It is my understanding, after just doing a little bit of homework on this particular motion for the meeting this evening, that Ms. Dougherty is correct, that none of our other schools have this piece of equipment that definitely saves lives, and high school does. I did speak with Assistant Superintendent Murphy today with regards to this motion, and she has been already in conversation with the Health Department. Would it be okay, Mayor, for her just to give us a few more details?
Excuse me?
Would it be okay?
Right, if I can just ask another question to us. We have them at the high school. Do we know how we got those, whether they were through a grant or...
I do not know how those were bought, and I believe they've been there for a while.
Thank you.
We do have someone from the Health Department ready to speak, Susan Boot. If you'd like to come forward and address the committee. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for letting us speak on this.
Thank you.
At the Daily School 12 days ago, we had a coworker who suffered a massive heart attack, and the entire staff that was involved couldn't work better as a team when I think back on that day. I want to think where I want to go from here. I know I've worked at a hospital for 20 years and, you know, worked in the school system for the last 14, and, you know, very glad for the experience that I've gotten from being in a hospital. And the difference from working in a school, being at a hospital, as you push a button and, you know, a roll of people come in, and all the equipment is right at your bedside. So, you know, going down to that situation when we were called, not knowing what we were finding, you know, we have our hands, our mouth, and our eyes, and that's it. You know, after being relieved by the fire department and the paramedics who did an amazing job taking over, I was, I'll be honest, was scared, very scared. My bones were shaken. It's a coworker, it's not a stranger. And, you know, we have people of all ages in the school, from children with different disabilities and on different medications, to staff who, we don't even know what health conditions they have, and a school that is even, you know, grandparents come in for special days, and it's a voting school, so you have the community that comes in. So I just knew that, you know, because we didn't have a defibrillator, I just thought, she's not going to make this. And I'm happy to say, this woman was discharged from Lowell General Hospital today, and it is amazing that she went through that and is coming out of it and being home in her own house today. But I looked up... I just... To the school department, want the importance of what a defibrillator means in minutes of having a heart attack. I wrote things down. I just hope you don't mind that I read a few of these statistics. You know, I know 450,000 people die from a cardiac arrest every year. 13% of all workplace fatalities result from sudden cardiac arrest. With improved defibrillation efforts, 40,000 more lives could be saved each year in the U.S. alone. Out of 96 people who die in the United States from sudden cardiac arrest, for every one fire death. We have extinguishers in buildings because we expect a safe environment, and why wouldn't we want an AED in the schools? When a person has a cardiac arrest, his or her chances of survival decrease to 7% to 10% for each minute that passes without a defibrillator. Defibrillation within three minutes leaves the chance of survival to 70%. Local EMS services can't respond that quickly, which is more the reason of why we want to have an AED on hand. Each state has a good Samaritan law with language about these AEDs, and I know it's not just easy to bring these AEDs into the school and everyone is happy and that's it. There's three main elements about having them, which is a medical direction for them, training, and record-keeping, meaning that you have to have someone in charge of making sure the battery is being charged and that the pads are replaced when they need to be. I just want to... I know we're on a very tight budget, the city and the school department, and we don't have all this money to just say, okay, let's get everyone what they want. But from an outsider looking in, you know, people have come up to me and, you know, the brother of the victim said that a company that he works with donates these defibrillators to schools all the time, and I believe that's how the high school got theirs. Two eighth graders wrote me a letter today, if I may read it. This even shows how the students want to be involved to get these devices. And it reads, "Dear School Committee..." I'm going to leave her name out of this to be confidential. "After the tragedy experienced, it has come to our attention how important the automated external defibrillator machine is. For example, during the incident, the nurse gave a lot of CPR, which did help. However, we think the AED machine is a more efficient and faster way to help save a life. This is the main reason why we would like to purchase one for the Daily Middle School. Many people think the device is not necessary, but we think it is. If that ever happened to someone in the school again, we would have that machine handy, and it would be able to get the person better help faster. Yes, it is very expensive, but we have an idea on how we can get the money to purchase it. We would like to raise the price of the next dance ticket from $5 to $8. For every ticket bought, we would use that extra $3 to help pay for the AED device. Honestly, after talking to a couple classmates and teachers, everybody seems to agree that this is a good idea. We also think it is a good idea because the Valentine's Day dance is decorated with lots of hearts, and this machine has to do with saving someone's life from a heart attack. In conclusion, we both agree that having this device would be very handy, and raising the ticket price to $8 each could help us raise money for the device much quicker. Sincerely, Brian Peterson and Sarah Arat." And just two other suggestions. I mean, it takes a team to brainstorm this, but like, our principal, Mr. Skinner, networked with people, and someone has offered, I believe it's an after-school coach, to get through his company a defibrillator. And that's just one school that, you know, someone is offering, this is for you. And my other suggestion is, you know, we're asked for donations for the United Fund every year, and I don't know if it's possible, but if the inclusion of donating for a defibrillator in the schools alongside the United Fund or just for it, is just a suggestion. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Nurse Boot. Let me just say, on behalf of my colleagues and the administration, just want to thank you for the good work you did that day. Again, it really was an act of heroism, because I know that you did save the person's life, and I just want to acknowledge that publicly.
With a lot of people's help.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on the motion at this particular point? Why don't we take a roll call? Roll call on the motion.
Mayor Melonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Before we move back on the regular agenda, I'd just like to thank the other nurses who are here from the Health Department, as well the other school nurses, to support. Thank you for being here. And under full disclosure, my sister Mary Beth is a nurse. Moving on back to the regular agenda, under motions by Mr. Leary, request the superintendent provide to the school committee a review of the current virtual classroom technology status at Lowell High School, and provide recommendations to enhance and develop this program for the upcoming 2011-2012 school year. Second by Mr. Conway. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. When I first got on the school committee, one of the tours I received was of the high school, and one of the rooms that they showed you was a room where they did a lot of virtual technology and virtual classroom activity. I think it's something that, over the years, with grant cuts, I think it was funded under a grant, that actually unfortunately has been, I guess, cut, or at least dramatically reduced. I think it's... When I wrote the motion, my intent was not only to bring back virtual technology as use of classroom in certain classes, but also as a way of hoping to offset some of the budget, you know, cuts that may happen at the high school in terms of some of the programs. What I was initially thinking was the foreign languages, Spanish, Portuguese, Latin, et cetera. But I'd really like to see, I guess, going outside the box with some of the recommendations. What's feasible, where you can go? I think Mr. Lang had pointed out to me at one point that maybe we should be teaming up with other school districts that are looking for the same technology in terms of cost as well as need, be it Chelmsford, you know, wherever, Nashville, anywhere. I think it would help us keep the programs in place that we want. Even if we don't have budget cuts, which we know we will, this might actually be enhancing our programs as they exist today. And that's essentially the premise of the motion. It'll take a little while to develop. I talked to Dr. Jack as well at the high school. She thought it would be a very good idea to start pursuing it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, as presented, indicate by saying aye. Vote, it's a vote. Thank you. The next motion by Mr. Leary, request the superintendent provide recommendations to the school committee for the potential use of online classroom technology at Lowell High School for the upcoming 2011-2012 school year. Second by Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary.
This is... It sounds like the same motion as before, but it's more like online classes that they do in college. I don't know if it's appropriate or not appropriate. Again, in lines of budget cuts, if they are developed, we can see whether or not we want to go there. I don't know if I would support it or not support it, but if we're going to face cuts, the biggest issue we have to face, second biggest issue after cuts, is can we keep programs in place? So I'm just looking for recommendations. I was going to put it in the frame of one motion, but it is somewhat... It is a little bit different. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question. I threw you to the superintendent. Was that how the dual... There was some aspect of dual enrollment with UMass that was with these online classrooms? Do you know? I don't think we do it anymore, but...
It was before my time. Can I refer the question to Deputy Superintendent Frank?
In most cases, the dual enrollment program was professors from Millsus Community College or UMass Lowell or Lowell High School teachers teaching the curricula. I don't believe that I know of any technology-based programs. However, Dr. Scott and I will be going to a meeting with the Department of Education where they're talking about online courses at the state level, which is really interesting. So that's something we can bring to this forum. But I don't know personally, in the time that I've been in the curriculum office, about online courses, although my son takes them from the university, so that could be an option, which would be interesting.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. Just in terms of history, and I know it does predate both of you, but I do know that we did have distance learning in place at the high school. It was in conjunction with the university, UMass Lowell, and it was... It may even be before I was actually on the committee. It was quite a few years ago. But I do think that it was... And it was true distance learning, where a professor was at the university, had teacher, had students with them, and then there was a video feed that went both ways, so that students at the high school in a classroom could participate just as actively really on the other side, as opposed to like an online learning experience, which is kind of a different dynamic, both of which I think are great to investigate. But at the very least, there was some capacity, and I know that there was some real positive outcomes from it, you know, quite a few years ago. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Vote. Thank you. Under subcommittees, we did receive this evening the minutes from last evening's Joint Curriculum and Finance Subcommittee meeting, so I will turn to the chair, Mr. Leary and Ms. Martin, the chairs, excuse me. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So we did have our... The joint meeting on Joint Committee of Finance and Curriculum last evening. Present were from the Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Leary as chair, Ms. Dougherty and Mr. Leahy, present from the Curriculum Subcommittee, myself, also, I know there were a couple of other members, there's some overlap with the two committees, and also Committee Member Allison Laraba. From Central Office, we had Dr. Scott and Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang, Claire Abrams, our Coordinator of K-12 Mathematics, and we also had, who came to speak with us about some of the research opportunities, Dr. Kelly A. King, who is a preschool teacher at our Bartlett Community Partnership School, and Sheila Skippington from EDC, the Education Development Center. I think I'd like to package the first two together, just in the name of time. We did have two research proposals that were presented to us, one being conducted by Barbara Helms, Ph.D., the other being directed by Kelly King, Ph.D. So they were both being presented to us. They are preschool-based, both of these research studies. Neither are, I would say, kind of traditional hypothesis-driven research, but they are more information gathering and kind of time on task, and both, I think, would offer us the opportunity to learn a little bit more about the preschool dynamic and perhaps help improve, certainly in our district, excuse me, and have the opportunity to, you know, perhaps go well beyond that in terms of what may be discovered with this research. Both were approved by the subcommittees, and I would put forth a motion at this point to recommend to the full committee that we accept both research proposals and allow them to be conducted in our district. That'd be my first motion.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Martin, that we accept the proposals. Second by Mr. Leary. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Melonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Chair recognizes Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Because a meeting could never be that short. The other topic that we were discussing were the outstanding grants, and specifically the turnaround redesign grants that are going on. Primarily, we were talking about activities at the Merkland, our Level Four and the Performing School. There's certainly a lot of ambitious work going on there, and with the support of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we've been able to put in place, I think, some additional supports for that school community. We're working right now off of a $132,000 grant that is basically a planning grant for how we will move forward in the next three years. By doing an effective job with this during this planning time, we could... We'll be eligible at least to compete for three continuing years, which could represent additional $500,000 for the Merkland, which is certainly very much needed in a school that has... for the Merkland, which is certainly very much needed in a school that has real challenges and that's a school community that's doing its best to make the kind of critical improvements that we need. One of the things we did discuss was some of the decision-making and some of the choices that have been made in terms of spending. At this point, we are, as we all know, you know, we're in December, the year's half over, and I don't think that there's the intention or the interest in pulling people off jobs that they've been doing, but we do have some questions around some of the choices that have been made in the budget in terms of bringing in outside consultants. I won't say we, I'll say myself. I do have some concerns about how we spend this grant money and how we get the biggest impact, because obviously this is a school community that needs to have a very thoughtful and well-considered plan, and I think we all need to make sure that we're spending our money as effectively and efficiently as possible. So I think that that will, I suspect, be an ongoing conversation as we move forward. We did, in discussing kind of the bigger picture of the redesign process, talk about where we are right now. January is going to be when our next submission to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education needs to happen, so that process is ongoing right now with the grant being developed. I know that the superintendent did talk to us about some feedback that she's gotten. I'll say it, but if you need to correct me, please. My sense of it is that as this is being designed as a turnaround, as a competitive process for the turnaround schools, the turnaround plans, that we do need to be particularly aware of how we're crafting and how we're crafting our budget and all of the approaches in place. I know that there are some concerns regarding our, the way we can spend, spend some of the, some of the money that's directed towards additional staff time and some of our contractual requirements, how that's going to impact us when we're, in theory, competing against other districts. So that's going to be something that will need to be discussed. I know that the superintendent is waiting to receive some information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding how other districts are stacking up and how we can position ourselves effectively. My sense is that we do have some, so we've gotten some feedback on our, the initial kind of proposal to the turnaround. I don't know if we've gotten anything in writing or any kind of documentation of kind of what the response has been. If we have, and if we have, it would be great to share that with the committee, just so we can all take a look at it. Because I think as we move forward, there's going to be a lot of, I think, very key decisions being made in the next month, and we're certainly all on a very short timeframe, and I think it would be great to have the committee informed so that as decisions are being made, we're able to kind of, be able to express those opinions in a constructive way early enough in the process that it can actually impact the planning and how this, we're moving forward as a district to face these very real and important challenges. So we did discuss two out of the three that were brought to us last night. We didn't have an opportunity to discuss the final one, so I would make the recommendation that Massachusetts 21st Century Community Learning Centers, a high school-based grant, be put forward to the next curriculum subcommittee. I will warmly invite the finance subcommittee if they choose to join us again. And so I just, I want to make sure we don't miss the chance to review that in subcommittee. But overall, I think there's certainly some important work being done, and I think that it's important for the committee to remain very aware and involved as we go through this process. My sense would be, and I don't know if I need to make a substitute, but there is, or perhaps we wait till old business, is that better? There was a...
We can do it now if it's related.
You don't mind?
Yeah, no.
So we'd need to take a vote to enter into a contract with Teach for Teachers. The total amount, I'm going on memory here, is $75,000 for the current school year. I don't know if someone would like to make that in the form of a motion.
It's actually, it's actually in the minutes of the meeting from last night, as a substitute motion by Mr. Leary, second by Ms. Doherty, to recommend to the committee as a whole the authorization to support the Teachers for Teachers contract for this year. So would someone like to bring that forward?
Please.
Mr. Leary, second by Ms. Larva. Any further discussion? Roll call. Authorization to support the Teachers for Teachers contract for this year with a dollar of value of about $75,000.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Larva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Present.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
And I will say that I welcome any input from my colleagues or from the superintendent. If I've missed anything, it was certainly a long and involved meeting, but I think we got some strong sense of where we're heading, and I think it is some real inspiration for the hard work that we have ahead of us that we can all be, I think, a positive part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary, and then I'll recognize Superintendent Scott.
Just briefly, I think it was a great job by the chairperson, chairwoman of breaking out the very long meeting. Just quickly, I want to thank Principal DeCarlo for attending as well and providing his insight as to how the Merkland was progressing. The other issue, I guess, what, from my perspective, one of the major issues is taking some of the knowledge that we're working with the Merkland School and the Maury School and others and ensuring that we're drilling it into every other school in our district, especially if it's going to be effective. I think that's important. We get that done. So I don't want to belabor a never-ending meeting, but I think that's some of the dialogue from my perspective that I'll be talking about going forward. Thank you. In addition to the financial side of the picture.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I'd just like to address Ms. Martin's question with regards to feedback on her plan from the state. So just before Thanksgiving holiday, the deputy commissioner, Carla Brooks-Brier, did come to Lowell with her team to critique our plan, to ensure that it met with all the regulation specs that they were looking for. The committee was invited. Ms. Doherty was able to come. Many of you worked during the day, so it's difficult, but we appreciate, Ms. Doherty, you being able to make it. With that said, before the holiday, a letter was sent to me, and in that letter, at this point, there was the concern about how much time we needed, and so at the moment, that's why the deputy is surveying all of the districts to find out exactly how much time other districts have brought, so she can put that in our letter as our official feedback. So our official feedback letter is not complete. She's trying to get this other information from the other districts so she can put it in this official letter. So when I get that from her, that information was due yesterday from the districts, and then the letter with the completed documentation will be completed, and the deputy commissioner is really going the extra mile for Lowell.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Motion by Ms. Larva, second by Ms. Doherty, to accept the report of the joint subcommittee on finance and curriculum as a report of progress. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post its vote. Thank you. Continuing on with the agenda, reports of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you to Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operation Jay Lang for the report in our packet this evening on the FY 2011 health insurance plan participation rates. And although I won't review all of the documents, I would like to highlight a few of the particular points that I think our school community would also like to know. 1,376 active school department employees pursue health insurance through the city. Thirty-seven percent of active school department employees participate in the Master Medical Health Plan. Twenty-five percent of active school department employees participate in the PPO Health Plan. Thirty-eight percent of active school department employees participate in the HMO Health Plan. Sixty-four percent of active school department employees select a family coverage health plan. Thirty-six percent of active school department employees select an individual coverage health plan. If all active school department employees covered under the terms of a collective bargaining agreement participated only in the Master Medical Health Plan option, the total cost of school department active employee health insurance in FY 2011 would be $19,612,941. This is a $2,017,131 increase over the current cost of $17,604,810. If all active school department employees who currently participate in Master Medical Health Plan option were to participate in the PPO Health Plan option, a savings of $761,934 would be realized in FY 2011. The current cost of $17,604,810 would decrease to $16,842,876 attached to this particular document. You'll find the City of Lowell health insurance comparison and plan summary for FY 2011, Master Medical Summary of Benefits, Blue Care, Elect Preferred PPO Summary Benefits, the HMO Summary of Benefits as they break down.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I threw you to the superintendent, our Assistant Superintendent Lang. First of all, thank you very much for this report. I think it's important to know we saved $2 million in health insurance by, you know, the majority of our, 63% of our employees switching to the less expensive plans. I don't know what we would have done if we didn't have that $2 million in savings. That would have been jobs, clearly. My question is, do we know how many of our retirees are on the Master Medical? Is that information that we have and what those costs? Because I realize that moves back over to the city now, right? It doesn't, but they are school department retirees. Do we know that number? Thank you.
We don't actually track the information on the retired employees. When they retire from us, they go over to the city human relations office, and they manage all active city employees as well as all retired city and school employees. I've requested that information. I'll provide a follow-up report to you on that. We just don't have that data.
Madam Superintendent.
It is my understanding, talking with Paul Georges today, though, that is the vast majority of the retirees. I wouldn't want to say a percentage because I'm not sure of the exact amount.
Mr. Leary, then Ms. Martin, and Mr. Conway.
Threw you to the superintendent, to the assistant superintendent. How much would we save if they all went to an HMO? No, PPO is on here. We didn't say HMO. You know, you don't know the answer to that. So what I want to do here is also point out the $2 million savings, which the union president did push to achieve, and I think I acknowledged him and thanked him for it. The language we use is very important here. Okay? We still had an increase in health insurance costs. We had, we had less of an increase by $2 million and $17,131. We have an increase every year since I've been on this board. It goes up every single year, usually in increments of multiple millions of dollars. So let's make sure when we talk about what we're talking about, we know it, that the president did, and Paul Georges did, an excellent job trying to reduce it. No doubt about it. $2 million should not be sneezed at, but these costs still go up.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Just a question on how we pull these numbers. I know that we're, as a self-insured entity, I'm assuming these are based on averages and not the actual spending from last year, or is that, I'm just unsure how you determine it.
The city actually works with Cook &amp; Company and Insurance Consulting Group, and they set the rates for the year based on previous year actuals. So this is the amount that we'll actually pay into the health insurance trust fund for the year. I'm not 100% up on exactly what funding levels they keep in the trust fund or whatnot, but these are the actual amounts, regardless of our actual claims paid, that will contribute to the trust for this year. And then there would be an offsetting entry at the end of the year. Rates would be adjusted up or down for the following year based on actual claims paid in that fiscal year.
And that would impact our percentage increase, or do, well, increase, let's be real, for the next...
For the next, following fiscal year.
Thank you.
If I could for one second. I know Mr. Leary had just asked, what would the savings be if everyone moved to the HMO and from the PPO? Whether there is that stagger differential in the contract now, it would actually just be another $761,000 in savings if everyone did go from the same Master Medical right now and jump to the HMO. So you'd see the double savings. It'd be like 1.5 million then?
Million and a half, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also thank Mr. Lang for putting this report together. I think that while we've been discussing this for a number of weeks, it's good to see it actually in print, because there's been a lot of miscommunication and figures being thrown around, and I'm glad to see that we have something concrete in front of us. I'm also a little surprised that the number of 761 and change, I thought it might have been higher than that. That was the indication that I received from a number of different sources, and I'm kind of surprised that it is 761, 761,000. I also want to say, and I know that it has been, it has been said before, but I also want to publicly acknowledge an appreciation that the union has certainly pushed to move many of the employees, or at least, let's put it this way, and I don't want to use the word push, but I think to educate a number of employees in the school department where they have chosen to go to a PPO, and a number of these people that I have talked with, they're very, very happy and very pleased with it. And I think, once again, it shows that with communication, I think that's extremely important to give people the knowledge, and I believe that we are going to have a informational meeting. I think it's, is it December 15th, Mr. Mayor?
Correct, yes.
December 15th, and once again, that can help clear things up, because I've discussed it with individuals that are in the medical field, and they themselves don't know necessarily the difference between a PPO and an HMO and Master Medical, and I know I don't either. I think also what we have to keep in mind, there is a frustration that takes place because every year, the cost of health insurance for the school department has gone up, and I certainly can appreciate that. But also, anybody that you talk to in any industry, in any business, their insurance is going up every single year. I received a telephone call last night from my daughter, and she was complaining that her insurance has gone up, and she doesn't have Blue Cross Blue Shield, but she has another, another healthcare provider. But again, no matter what profession you're in, I'm afraid that that's the problem that we have, and we're not going to be able to solve that problem here in Lowell, Massachusetts, to be quite frank with you. That's something that has to be, has to be solved on a, on a national level, to get that control under, you know, take, take that, the health cost and bring it under control. And that has added to the frustration and the cost of whether it's municipalities or businesses. So again, I echo my, my colleague's frustration, but I'm afraid that it's something that, it's one of those things that we're faced with, and I suppose we certainly have to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larva, then, Mr. Leary.
Thank you very much. I'm in agreement with Mr. Conway's comments about certainly the frustration in dealing with the rising healthcare costs. You know, the superintendent doesn't have any control over those rising costs, so I think it's a little unfair of us to direct that frustration at her, but certainly be appreciative of the fact that, that a lot of work went into this information and that the administration is working with the city manager side and the unions to try to get the information out to retirees especially, since, as Mr. Conway had said in a previous conversation, Master Medical was the only plan they knew. That was the only plan they had, which is something I didn't realize. So it's very difficult to say to somebody, you've had this your entire life, this is, you know, this is a better plan. So that takes, as Mr. Conway said, communication and education for them, to let them know that this, this information, that these plans are as good, if not better. And again, my personal opinion is that the HMO and the PPO offer you the preventive care and would be better than Master Medical, but that's my own little personal opinion. But I did want to say thank you to the administration for at least working with the union and with the city manager side to get the December 15th date in place, and also I believe Mr. Georges from the union has offered to bring in some benefit people to also speak to their members as an additional forum for them. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
It's funny, you know, when I first started as a self-employed, I had Harvard Vanguard through my wife's company, and that cost a lot of money. Cost the company a lot of money. A couple of years into it, they just switched it one year, and I was sort of going to Harvard and Chelmsford, and I'm down in Leahy Clinic in Burlington. They didn't ask me. You know, my whole life, no one's ever asked me what kind of health insurance. They said, if you want to work here, here's your health insurance. Right now, I have a PPO. Excellent plan. Cost me a sugar load of money, but no one ever asked me. My father's a teacher for thirty-eight years in Hoyoke. You know, they just switched their plans over there. You know, it doesn't, it's... People don't get asked in the private sector. So the frustration is, what do we do about it? Well, I guess, you know, I am frustrated, because mine just changes. They don't ask me, say, gee, what do you think, Jim? What do you think about your healthcare? You want to go here or there? No. We switched it because we can't afford it. Enough said.
Ms. Laraba, I also want to mention to my colleagues that Mr. Georges would like to speak. If we, if he does, we have to suspend the rules. So I know he's had his hand up over there a couple of times. Ms. Laraba.
I guess, from Mr. Delary's perspective, I guess that's one of the benefits of being in a union, that you negotiate these things in your contract, and you have to change and work within the contract.
Thank you. Move to suspend the rules by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Delary, for the purpose of letting Mr. Georges, the union representative, address the committee. And you do remember our five-minute rule, Mr. Georges.
I'm going to be pretty brief on this. I just, you know, I appreciate the fact that people appreciate that we've done an educational program, because when we negotiated this several years ago, the idea was to have a choice. And you really don't have a choice unless you have an informed choice. So consequently, as Ms. Laraba had indicated previous to that, most teachers had only Master Medical, as was the case for the whole city of Lowell, you know, ten or twelve years ago. So our effort was to educate. And we've encouraged the retirees, some of our retirees, there has been a savings, I think, on the city side, too, that's not reflected in the numbers that you have, by virtue of people who are not Medicare-eligible, but switched to an HMO or a PPO when we were educating our active members. So some retirees came, but that wasn't a concerted effort, because we had a problem contacting them. We've advised them today to go to the meeting on the fifteenth and ask the appropriate questions, and also advise them that after the new year, we're going to bring in Boston Benefit Partners, along with perhaps the labor representatives from Blue Cross Blue Shield, so that they could be more fully informed about the options. And I think that's one of the things I've been advocating, is instead of the sort of aggressive posture of trying to strip the collective bargaining rights away on health insurance, educating large groups of people so that they would move and migrate toward that, you can get most of the way there. And certainly, the example is exactly what's happened with active teachers over a three-year period, and you can expect that it will continue in that direction as time goes on, assuming no other events occur that disrupt that. But I did want to say, too, there's two other factors that have added an additional financial burden to the health insurance for the school committee and the school side. And for the city side, at least in one case. Over a number of years, we work with a fund, essentially, it's a fund, a health insurance fund, that Blue Cross administers. It takes the money out to pay the doctors, it takes in the money from the employees and the employer to replenish the fund. Over a number of years, that fund, we had minor increases, two percent increases in the cost of healthcare, where it should have been perhaps ten or fifteen percent over a few-year period, which then necessitated huge increases, substantial increases that weren't necessary based upon claims against, but based upon the depletion of the fund. So you had a three-year period where there was roughly twenty, I think it was nineteen percent one year, twenty percent or twenty-one the other, and then last year was ten percent. And half of those increases, twenty-five, clearly twenty-five percent, were not used based upon increased claims by, you know, by employees in their, you know, because of their medical needs, but to replenish the fund. If that hadn't happened, the increases over the last few years would have been significantly smaller than they were. So I've got to the insurance advisory meetings that I've done now for eighteen and nineteen years, and we sort of monitor that. The other change that took place that put an additional burden solely on the school department side was the decision of the city manager to go from a calculation of what the price should be for a family plan. Previous to last year, the pricing of the family plan was two-point-one times the price of a single plan. Got it? I mean, everybody kind of get that? And last year, he made, when he made the unilateral change to make the price of a family plan two-point-three times, I believe it's two-point-three times, the cost of a single plan. Well, why would that negatively impact the school department? Because as you look at the data, two-thirds of the, two-thirds of the plans on the school department side are family plans. So that's clearly an increase. So in a time when it was a ten percent increase, a ten percent increase overall in rates, the family plans went up another ten percent or roughly, I'm sure Mr. Lang could get you right to the number, but it was much more substantial, and that negatively impacted us further. So there are explanations for some of this, and if that change hadn't been made, and to Mr. Delary's suggestion, I understand, I know private sector, I was in the private sector, it is as though I was always a school employee, but it is something we negotiated, and it's something that in the past, we have protected at the expense of other consideration at the bargaining table. In some cases, monetary raises, other benefits, and so on. So that's all I'm saying, and I understand his frustration. I do not envy you, as school committee people, dealing with the kind of financial problems that we have. I do not envy you. It can't be a fun time. And I know that, because it's not a fun time for me either. We've had to make some modifications in ways that we, you know, our expectations and so on to reflect the reality that's out there in the world. And to be totally honest with you, I think public sector employees take it on the chin, because what was considered just sort of the common way of doing business is now seeming to be some kind of a privilege. Okay? So it's not, it's not an easy position. But I would suspect that, you know, we're going to get further down the road in dealing with these things, working together, you know, in some kind of proactive way. And that's precisely why we've continued to do the education process, and I think it will be effective in bringing the overall cost of health insurance down with retirees, as they understand more of what's going on. So if I can help you in any other way, I mean, now I have any questions, I'll certainly... But thank you for the opportunity, just so you can speak on that.
Thank you, Paul. Anything else on the report? Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Leahy to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor signify by saying aye to vote. Next report, central administration and early childhood relocation to the Rogers Middle School. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. In response by a motion made by Jack Doherty requesting the total cost of our move out of the downtown facilities where we held two leases, the personnel costs associated with that move, as we moved from there to the Rogers Middle School, was sixty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. And the non-personnel costs, for example, networking our computers, moving expenses, et cetera, for the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-four thirty-four cents. The total relocation expenses of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. The savings that we have realized to date because of this move and the ending of those leases, the net total savings for FY ten and eleven combined is one million sixty-four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to thank Mr. Lang for putting this report together. I think it's really interesting to look at. We spent less than two hundred thousand dollars to retrofit the Rogers School, and a chunk of that, seventy-five thousand of that, was for a new telephone system, which I believe... Does that impact the whole district? I know it's more than just the Rogers School.
Yeah, a lot of our equipment is centrally located, so not only in the telephone system, but the computer systems and things like that. A lot of it is located at the Rogers. So I included the cost here under that school, but really, you could apportion it to the different schools that utilize it. But I didn't want to gray the waters at all. So everything's included here.
Right. So the telephone, seventy-five thousand, twelve thousand for the computer room, that impacts the whole district. And we're looking at a savings of still a million dollars. And going forward, every year that we're not paying rent on the properties that we used to rent, we're saving eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So I think, you know, it did turn out to be, although it was unfortunate that we had to close a middle school, we're still dealing with the repercussions of that in terms of class size. I think it continues to have been the right decision for what we were faced with fiscally. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the report? Ms. Laraba.
I just wanted to acknowledge that this was great thinking outside the box on the part of the administration, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Accept the report as presented by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post the vote. Next item, bullying prevention and intervention plan. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I thank Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, Anne Murphy, for our bullying prevention and intervention plan that is in your packet this evening. Just a bit of history behind this document that's in front of you this evening. As you are aware, the legislation was recently passed in the state requiring all school districts in the Commonwealth to have a bullying prevention and intervention plan. Lowell Public Schools was a little bit ahead of the curve. Our student handbook already covers the issue of bullying. That language was included. The new regulations came out this fall, and we had to ensure that certain steps were taken within the district, that we would have a draft plan. And at this time, if it's all right with you, Mayor, I would like to turn the mic over to Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
Yes, Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
Thank you. This is the draft plan. It does contain all of the components that are required through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We have customized a lot of it to Lowell. It has been posted on the Lowell Public School website. It can be accessed through the Office of Student Support Services, under Student Information, and on the main homepage that comes up, there is information there relative to our December thirteenth public presentation of the draft plan. That will be at the Butler School, it's from six-thirty to eight-thirty, and we will be presenting this to the public and having an open discussion period. Next week, during the principal and assistant principal leadership, we'll be looking at the plan, doing some edits, talking about safety plans, how to complete an investigation, how to put a good, thoughtful safety plan together, not only for the targets, but for the aggressors as well. At the next school committee meeting on December fifteenth, I plan to bring back to you a final plan for your approval. Once the committee has approved that plan, I'll then forward it down to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for their final approval.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Conway.
Just very briefly, I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Murphy. This report actually was incredible. Well thought out, well prepared. I thought I was reading a doctorate dissertation, to tell you the truth. It was an excellent, it was an excellent job, so I want to congratulate you on that. I think it's certainly very descriptive, and I think it puts everything out right there in black and white, and it's very easy to understand. So again, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Anyone else on the plan? Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Laraba to accept the report or the plan as a report of progress. We look forward to the upcoming meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Last item under reports, the 2011 Knowledge Bowl. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's hard to believe it's this time of year again, but we would like to bring these dates of our preliminary matches, elimination rounds, and semifinals to the committee's attention, in case anybody would like to be a judge. I know in the past, Ms. Martin's been there for the finals. Ms. Doherty's been there many times as well. So please look at the dates, and if you want to be a judge, it's a really fun night, and our students really get to show off their trivia pursuit skills.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the superintendent, I'd just like to make the request that we put the invitation out to members of our community to also be judges, because I think it's a great opportunity to kind of show off our kids and some of the... I mean, I think that sports just naturally seem to get a lot of attention. They get coverage in the paper, and I'm not taking against, taking anything away from the athletic programs, but this one in particular, I'd love to see some community faces in those judges' seats. So I would ask you to encourage the people organizing it to do that kind of invitation outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the Knowledge Bowl? Accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Any new business this evening? Moving on, convention and conference requests. Don't see any in the packet. Under communications, we have a number of communications. We have communications from Jean Franco, Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, from Anne Murphy, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, and from Jay Lang, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, which read, please accept this letter as written notice as required in section two of my employment agreement that I desire to negotiate a successor agreement to continue employment in the Lowell Public Schools after my current contract date expires on June thirtieth, 2011. Accepting communications and placed on file by Ms. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you. Lowell Telecommunications, Channel Ten, broadcast of school committee meetings, live on the first and third Wednesday of the month. Thursdays at six p.m., Saturdays and Sundays at two p.m., Tuesdays at ten a.m. Under professional personnel, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby request to donate sick leave days to the following staff, Mary Zinski, paraprofessional Shaughnessy School, twenty-five days. Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mia Millinazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Ms. Leahy.
Yes.
Ms. Delary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Civil service, nothing. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor adjournment, signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you.